Call to order the New Kent County Board of Supervisors, February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two. Work session order. Ms. Watkins, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Evelyn.
Here.
Mr. Tiller.
Here.
Ms. Page.
Here.
Mr. Steers.
Here.
And Mr. Lockwood.
Here.
Good morning. Welcome, everyone. Welcome to the EDA. We've had some exciting news over the last week or so. But y'all need to call your meeting order.
Call this meeting to order for the New Kent County EDA, February twenty-third, nine o'clock in the morning. Ms. Carey, would you poll the members?
Bell?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Haslip?
Present.
Mr. Iskut?
Present.
Mr. Robinson?
Present.
Mr. Starr?
Present.
Dr. Washington, absent. Thank you.
Thanks. Morning again. So, item one this morning is a joint meeting with the EDA for the consideration of economic development incentives. Ms. Smollett, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Evelyn, members of the board, members of the EDA board. It's been a busy couple of days for us. And I just want to, first of all, just take a minute. You know, when I say the board, I'm looking at my EDA board and the Board of Supervisors collectively, the twelve of you in county administration. You know, we've done something, when I say we, we've done something here that's never been done before in this county. You know, major economic development announcement. You know, it's, you know, this is the, this project, and you know, I think progress as a whole is directly tied to the leadership, the attitude, the willingness and the understanding of both boards. So, you know, really appreciate all of your support that you've given, and this is definitely a we project. This is a wonderful thing for New Kent County. Job creations, you know, we heard Commissioner Revenue a few weeks back talking about, you know, the percentage of residential versus commercial tax base. Well, this is going to flip that. And my phone has been nonstop since eight-thirty on Friday morning, everyone from Atlanta to Charlotte to Baltimore. So, it's wonderful. And just the reach here, I'm looking at my, you know, the LinkedIn page, seven thousand eighty-two views here since Friday. These are professionals. These are, you know, working professionals who are on LinkedIn. I think just our Facebook, Chris, in the first four hours, I think we were at eleven thousand views on that. So, New Kent County is on the map, which is, you know, where we want it to be. We knew, we knew we had a good story to tell, and we kept telling that story, and it paid off. So, we're here at a point now where there are several agreements that are in place for AutoZone. And I'm just going to go through them real quick, and we're going to need some action by the EDA and the Board of Supervisors. The first one's a development agreement between the EDA and SPF Investments for the construction of a road. Been working with Timmons, about a forty-two-hundred linear foot road going into this property to serve this tract land. But the good news is it opens up about three hundred other acres of industrial economic opportunity property that'll have a road, water, and sewer there. So, now we can drive our truck down and point to the site and says, here's where you'll be located. So, this particular development agreement has been approved by Mr. Hefty. It talks about the funding we will be applying, we are, we have applied for state grants. Those applications are still pending with the state, very confident that everything will come through. But what we need is for this particular development agreement where the EDA and SPF Investments authorize Mr. Starr as Chair of the EDA to sign it, and then ultimately the Board of Supervisors would need to direct Mr. Hathaway to execute this agreement on behalf of the Board of Supervisors. So, that's the first, and Mr. Hefty, I don't know if, you know, I'll explain all three of them, and maybe we should take three different motions, whatever you, you know, whatever you recommend. But that's one of three. The second document is the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund, COF, through the state. Been working with Virginia Economic Development Partnership in the Governor's Office. There are funds set aside and put for this project from the Commonwealth of Virginia. This was drafted up by VDP's attorney. It outlines the monies that will go to the company. These are performance-based grants. You know, so as jobs are created, you know, a certain payment goes to the company. This particular agreement, we've already had it signed by the exec, two executives at AutoZone, and we're going to need a motion from the EDA to have Mr. Starr sign, and again, Board of Supervisors to authorize Mr. Hathaway to sign on behalf of New Kent County. The third and final document is the local incentive agreement. So, local agreements need to at least match the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund. This is something that, you know, really, you know, Mr. Evelyn, Mr. Hathaway, Mr. Stotter, and I, we just hammered this out. And, you know, this was, you know, I tip my hat to Mr. Evelyn for thinking outside the box. You know, we were, you know, we worked with Mr. Mullis, Mike Mullis, J.M. Mullis out of Memphis, you know, who's known as one of the, you know, the toughest site selection consultants in North America as far as negotiating. You know, tough but fair is the way we said it. And, you know, he challenged us, and, you know, we had good leadership here. So, we ended up with a local level agreement for the particular company. It spells out the funds that are used to, you know, job creation, some of the refunding of permit fees, building permit fees, and then a tax rebate for a period of ten years. Again, this is money that, if this company didn't come, there's no money coming to the county anyway. So, they would, again, they would pay their taxes, and a certain portion of that goes back for a period of ten years. So, you know, and this is a, I think that now we can say in public, it's, without this company, we're not getting any tax money from this company. It's better to get a certain percentage for a period of time than nothing at all. So, you know, looking at the return on investment here, again, three hundred and fifty-two jobs. And we talked to the company executives, this is, these are three hundred and fifty-two people who can drive five, ten minutes to work. You don't have to drive to Richmond, don't have to drive to Newport News, spend time, you know, with your kids, go to the baseball games after school and whatnot. So, that's the important thing. So, it's really a quality of life thing for a lot of the residents here in the community. So, local level agreement, once again, EDA board needs to authorize Mr. Starr to sign, and the Board of Supervisors needs to authorize Mr. Hathaway to sign. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but that's, those are the motions that we needed this time.
Thanks, Matt. And on behalf of the board, Matt, you know, this project wouldn't be here without you. You worked tremendously hard on it, and your leadership along with the EDA and the rest of the board, you know, it was a, definitely a team effort to get them here. So, thank you for all your guidance. Well done. Ms. Tiller?
One question for you, Matt, and it's one I've been asked probably fifty times already, is when are they going to start?
Fair question. So, the anticipated timeline, we will have a groundbreaking ceremony sometime late spring, early summer. We're still working on closing on the property, one hundred and forty-five acres southeast quadrant of exit two-eleven. So, for everybody watching, the stub road that you see between Pilot and the sixty-four eastbound non-ramp, that's where the road extension will go, and they'll be in the back there. So, groundbreaking is slated for late spring, early summer. This is a monster project. This is a two-year build. So, two-year construction timeline for, you know, for site development building, a three-to-four-month outfit, and they'll be up and running, their goal is Q-one of two thousand and twenty-five. Yes, sir?
So, we need three motions, Mr. Hefty, from, I guess the EDA needs to make those motions, correct?
Yeah, who wants to go first, EDA or the board?
EDA can go.
EDA, if you can take it in one motion, which would be a motion to authorize the Chair to sign the development agreement, the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund agreement, performance agreement, and the local level incentive performance agreement with AutoZone as presented today.
Mr. Chairman, I make motion to approve you as Chairman of the New Kent EDA to sign the development agreement between New Kent County and SPF Investments associated with the AutoZone project. You want to do all three of them?
Do all of them.
Okay. All right. Let me do that. In addition, I'd like to make motion to approve Matt Starr to sign the Commonwealth Development Opportunity Fund Performance Agreement. And third, I'd like to make the motion to approve Matt Starr as Chairman of the New Kent EDA to sign the local level Economic Development Incentives Performance Agreement as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, Mr. Robinson. Motion is on the table. Ms. Carey, would you poll the members?
Yes. Ms. Bell?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Haslip? Mr. Iskut?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Starr?
Aye.
Dr. Washington, absent. Thank you.
Mr. Davis, could you pass those up here?
Thank you, sir.
Think we have a motion for Mr. Tiller?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, please.
Authorizing Hathaway, Mr. Hathaway?
Well, this development agreement, where do I start on this one? Okay, the development agreement, okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to approve, give Mr. Hathaway the authority to sign the development agreement with SPF Investments. Also, I would like to give Mr. Hathaway the Commonwealth Development Opportunity Fund Performance Agreement, and also for Mr. Hathaway, the local level Economic Development Incentives Performance Agreement.
Give him the authorization to sign, right?
Yeah. To sign. Thank you, Mr. Hefty. What he said.
Thank you, Mr. Tiller. Ms. Watkins, will we poll the members, please?
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Anything else?
There's no further business for the EDA than entertain a motion for adjournment?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you all for coming this morning.
You don't have to leave, you can stick around.
Item two, BikePed RVA two thousand and forty-five Plan RVA Regional Commission update. Transportation planners, Dan Motta and Philip Rigan. Young, come on up. Good morning. Yes, this is the red button.
Good morning. I am Phil Rigan, and it's good to be following good news. We are with Plan RVA. We're very familiar with Ms. Page. Thank you for having us, thank you, everyone, for having us come to New Kent this morning. We do have a presentation. Dan's going to start us off.
So, yes, thank you for having me, or having us.
Hit your button, please. Thank you.
My name is Dan Motta from Plan RVA. So, today, we're just going to be giving you a pretty brief overview of BikePed RVA two thousand and forty-five, which is the update to our previous two thousand and four plan. So, just to give, again, a high-level overview, we're going to give a brief description of the plan, go over an introduction to the guiding principles, vision, and goals, look at the six big ideas that we hope will help reframe transportation priorities in this region, and finally, how you and New Kent can be involved in this process. So, like I said earlier, the last BikePed RVA, or the last Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan in this region was from two thousand and four. So, obviously, a lot has changed in New Kent and in the larger region. So, we're ripe for a reevaluation of bicycle and pedestrian needs in the Richmond region. In two thousand and nineteen, a steering committee was established to guide the process and be a representative voice for our community, including here in New Kent. And safety was identified as the primary call to action, having safer streets for our communities. And so, we did hear after the Connect RVA two thousand and forty-five, which is the long-range transportation plan that was adopted last fall, after that, we heard a lot from the public about wanting to have a relook at our transportation priorities and where we are spending money and how we're connecting communities and families. So, with that in mind, we wanted to get a little more input on the bicycle and pedestrian aspect of regional transportation, and that's what this document is focused on. So, just to set the definition for BikePed RVA, it's not a ranking of priority projects, it's not focused on any one jurisdiction, and it's not a finite or static plan. But it is a regional framework for active transportation, bicycle and pedestrian, and companion plan to the long-range transportation plan that was adopted last year. It's a connection of best management practices, but above all, it's a recognition that all people should have a viable means for travel, for everyday life needs. So, these guiding principles were developed from working within the framework of Connect RVA two thousand and forty-five and approved by our steering committee. And these six principles that you see, equity, choice, completion of active networks, last mile transit, contact-sensitive design, and safe multimodalism. So, here in, you know, New Kent County, last mile transit would mean, you know, kind of getting people to your two park-and-ride locations and paratransit for those who need it, and, you know, building sidewalks and bike infrastructure where appropriate. So, I want to just quickly focus on one of the, one of the goals, which is equity in transportation, which is pretty much just seeking fairness and impartiality, focus on social and economic opportunity. Pretty much, it's about providing every person with access so they can fully participate in society. And here is a portion of our vision that we set out in our plan, which is that the Richmond region will provide mobility for people of all ages and abilities through safe, continuous, recognizable, and intuitive pedestrian and bicycle network. We aim to make biking a safe, biking and walking a safe travel mode that is well-integrated into all of our regional plans and local plans. So, with the guiding principles and vision, that informed these particular goals, and in the plan that gets a little into more detail, but we also, we also have a more specific goals, like, you know, transportation access to jobs and community services, zero cyclist and pedestrian fatalities, and increasing mode choice among users. So, with the guiding principles, vision, and goals, we crafted, by Plan RVA staff and the steering committee, crafted six big ideas for a region that goes into more detail in the plan, but Phil will give you a little brief introduction to those today.
Thank you, Dan. So, we've got these six regional ideas. You know, might be harder to read some of these. Again, we'll have all of these available at the website to expand on, but I just want to briefly go through each of these as, how did you advance? Okay. So, big idea number one, create a regional active transportation arterial network. So, in the Richmond region, we've got, I know the map might be harder to read. Again, the website has everything in detail where you could see much more clearly. But, you know, you can see New Kent off to the far right side there, Charles City to the south, you've got Capital Trail. That's the beginnings of a lot of the regional network, that spine network. There's a proposal for the Fall Line Trail, which would connect between Ashland and Petersburg. That's that north-south. So, what we're really talking about is how do we work from that spine network into the smaller portions of the region? As you can see with New Kent, there are connections from Charles City, proposed connections along one fifty-five connecting the courthouses. A lot of that is obviously proposed level, but the, again, the idea is using those main trails, Capital Trail has been a very successful trail to, you know, begin some of the more local connections. Big idea number two, prioritize equity and access for underserved populations. You know, again, as in our data analysis, you know, examining all throughout the region, New Kent fared pretty well when it came to environmental justice and equity for underserved communities. Obviously, your neighbor, Charles City, the entire county is shaded in as economic, as underserved areas for equity emphasis. You know, eastern portion of Henrico County, south side of Richmond, there's definitely some areas of need. But again, trying to have fairness, have, you know, all these different populations served with transportation, active transportation. Big idea number three, establish higher standards for active transportation infrastructure. So, really, we examined throughout the region, there's different ways to look at a bike lane or a trail, whether you're looking at urban context, a suburban context, or rural. You know, most of New Kent would qualify in the rural category. Your neighbor, again, with Charles City County, that multi-use path, the Capital Trail, has been quite successful. But you wouldn't try to have bike lanes like you see here in New Kent. That would be much more, you know, that's Third Street in downtown Richmond. But it's trying to have a higher industry standard for all these disparate trails, and as we connect them, have them be much more similar throughout the region. Big idea number four, much more of an urban focus here, connections from neighborhoods to transit. Realize there's not bus service in New Kent, but again, we worked with the previous plans with GRTC, our different transit planning efforts at Plan RVA on, you know, how to enhance the stops. But what we're referring to in our plan is more how do we get to the stops? That first mile from your front door to the stop, and then once you've reached your bus stop, how do you get from that stop to your destination? It's primarily going to be walking or biking in those situations. So, it's just, you know, trying to provide better connections for those transit stops. Big idea number five, utilize bike boulevards and safe neighborhood streets for local connections. Primarily, the streets within our region are safe. The, this map is, again, very hard to see, but all those shaded lavender, purple kind of areas are the neighborhood streets. It's much more dense in the city area, but, you know, just looking at New Kent, you've got two forty-nine, one fifty-five. Those are your higher traffic volume, higher-speed roads. It's really those other streets that are much lower volume, lower traffic speeds, that could be, you know, where you could have more connections for people. And in the previous photo, I kind of went by pretty quickly, but it's connecting those cul-de-sac neighborhoods from one to the other, so, you know, you're not having to go out to, you know, one fifty-five to come back to the courthouse from a neighborhood. It might be a connection from within to get to the schools, get to the courthouse area, for example. Big idea number six, this is, again, more of an urban development here, but the idea of working with developers to incorporate high-quality active transportation infrastructure in their projects. That's the ground up from the very beginning. My, our examples really focus in Henrico. You see that in the map there, the north-south, that green line there is Fall Line, and that's a proposed trail, you know, connecting Ashland to Petersburg. But from the beginning, Henrico has been looking at this as a way to, you know, from, you know, from all perspectives to connect to their, you know, redevelopment of Virginia Center Commons, this other Green City development, which is bound by Param Road and ninety-five. That's going to, there's going to be a big arena that they're developing there, and some other retail and commercial development there. But they, both of those are focused on how do we get with active transportation to Fall Line, to other amenities. They've got a lot of sports tourism going along that same corridor. So, just, again, trying to look at it as a tourism-friendly, a, you know, active transportation-friendly development. You know, the implementation process, you know, we have a list of proposed projects, how we go through the different funding considerations for these projects, and all the other guiding, you know, portions of the plan to make the implementation process happen. As we've been saying, we know the maps are hard to read, on these screens are very small, but everything for our public input, for the draft plan itself, all the maps, everything, the, this link actually goes to our story map, which ends up being sort of an executive summary of the plan, but it's at BikePedRVA.org. Our open comment period, I'm sorry, our public comment period, yes, and you can view different layers of the map. Our public comment period is open until March twenty-third, opened a couple of weeks back here. We've been making presentations to, Barbara Jaycocks, my boss, was in Charles City last night. We've been going around to a lot of the localities, we've been hosting meetings. We would love to host more, if anybody, even if it had to be at Ms. Page's backyard party. But if you wanted to contact me, the email is there, the plan, BikePedRVA.org, and we've got a couple of weeks left of the open comment period. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chairman? Would you just touch on the funding aspect of how, I know you guys are in planning stages and all, don't have it all ironed out, but I would be curious to see, you know, what kind of outline you have for funding these projects.
So, thank you for the question. All the projects that are brought to us are primarily through each of the localities. We work with all the planners at these localities. If they have projects that they propose, we try to help them find the right funding buckets, you know, usually using federal money to help, you know, in one way or another, supplement, you know, local funding, or, you know, in the case of, you know, Capital Trail end up being almost fully funded, you know, through different state-level buckets, and some federal. But for the most part, the projects are nominated by the locality, and then we work with them to find the right federal funding bucket, you know, whatever it might be to help, to help fund it.
Anyone else? Ms. Page?
Mr. Chair, so, thank you for the presentation.
Uh, Mr. Chair, so, um, thank you for the presentation, um, I would ask, um, I would ask all of our citizens of the county to indeed, um, go onto the website and place your input, um, and, um, that will come back to this board, so that when we're at the, um, Plan RVA meeting, then we can make, um, decisions, um, based on the desires of our, um, citizens here in the county, um, a few projects come to mind here in New Kent, um, we do have, um, Pound Fork Park, and we have communities around there, um, so to be able to, um, get sidewalk and bike paths from those communities to the park, that's one, we have, um, we have, um, we have, um, another, um, community on Route 60, where they could use bikes to go to the grocery store and other, um, retail stores over there, and then we have one, um, in our, um, 155 corner, that they could absolutely use bike paths, and that probably is a connection between New Kent and Charles City, so, um, I put my input, and I have some more, of course, um, and, um, and then you touched on transit, and so, um, I love the idea of the covers, however, I guess it's a greater discussion, uh, Greater Richmond Transit, is how to get, um, transit and connectivity here in the county, so I thank you for your presentation, again, asking all our citizens to, um, please ma'am, please sir, uh, take advantage of this opportunity to express your voice, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you all for coming out today. Thank you for having us, we appreciate the time. Have a good day. Item three, review of financing proposals for the FY23 capital projects, Mr. Cole? Siegel, you coming?
Morning. I have, uh, something to pass around, I think it's identical to what you've got, but it, uh, took a hard tap, just in case.
Morning Ted.
Good morning.
Appreciate being here, Dan Siegel is here to ask, answer any questions you might have on financings that we're going to discuss.
Are assessing, um, and as part of the RFP, is the renovation to the historic high school at an estimated cost of seven, animal shelter at five million, fire station number four at four million, so the general fund projects in their entirety is approximately 16 million, and those are estimates at this point, those are the numbers we had to work with. At the same time, um, there is a solid stabilization project at the utility system that has a current estimated cost of 8.8 million, um, I think that is programmed in the utility CIP for FY24, but, um, as I understand it, and I, I know that Larry and Mike Lang are here, if you, if you need any discussion on the project, to understand it, that it's, it's probably something that's better described as a, uh, you have to do, not necessarily an optional project that you might do, but they can speak to that, so, since we were going out and asking for funding proposals on the three general fund projects, felt like, let's also ask for, uh, funding on the sludge project, even though it is technically a couple of years ahead of where it's currently scheduled in the CIP. Um, so we asked for a few different scenarios, we actually sent out two RFPs, one was for a lease financing, which you all have done many times before, that's where we use the EDA as a conduit issuer, and the lease financing, we asked for three project amounts, I'm on the third bullet point, and I'll round off, 16 million, which is the general fund projects only, 20 and a half million, which is all of the general fund projects plus half of the sludge project, roughly four and a half million, or 24.9, call it 25 million for everything potentially, all done through a lease financing using the IDA, where we would use collateral of the historic school as the security for the loan. And then we also asked for, specific to just the utility project, a revenue bond, a pledge of the revenues of the water and sewer system, like we've done before, um, in four, in, in two amounts, 4.6 and 9 million, just roughly half the project or the entire project. At the same time, we submitted an application to the Virginia Resources Authority, that is in process, we had a preliminary call with them a week or so ago, went fine, um, so they are an option, they are still doing their due diligence, but at this point, we didn't see any red flags, so I, I'd like to think that VRA is an option, the one caveat I would say on VRA is that, assuming we get approved, or we want to continue in the approval process, they will not be in a position to lock in their interest rates until mid-May, May 11th, so we've got about 75 days, plus or minus, between now and when they would sell their bonds, which is when they would lock in rates, and, you know, and rates could move around, rates could go lower, uh, rates could go higher, but that's an unknown with them, what we're going to present on the banks are, are known rates. So, on page three, real high summary, you can see our water and sewer revenue bond chart at the top, we've asked for 15-year payback and 20-year payback, either funding half the project or the entire project based on the estimates, and then in the chart in the middle, we've asked for three options on the lease revenue bond, including all of the general fund projects, all of them plus half the utility, all of them plus the full utility, the range goes from about 16 to 25 million there, we're going to break this down for you. When the proposals came back, we received three bank proposals for the lease revenue financing, and we received six for the water and sewer revenue bond financing. So, we're going to break it down first with the water and sewer revenue bond, you go to page five, these are the six banks that submitted, we know all of these banks, they're, they're, um, active in, in local government finance lending, we've highlighted CNF, they had by far the most attractive proposal for the water and sewer revenue bond, they did not, uh, submit for the, the lease financing, but they did a, they put, submitted a very nice proposal for the water and sewer revenue bond, so that's really what we're going to focus on, they gave a 15-year rate that would be fixed at a 2.04, whether you borrow four or nine million, and a 20-year rate that would be fixed at a 227, and you can see by comparison, they were, um, you know, they were better than all the other proposals for the water and sewer system, so we're going to focus on them, um, page six, a little bit about the other components of their proposal, we're fully credit-approved, uh, we would need to give them a verbal acceptance, um, on or about March 4th, we would need to close by the end of March, all of which is doable if y'all decide this is something you want to pursue, um, you have the ability to prepay the loan without penalty, um, their only penalty would occur for the first three years if you're prepaying their loan with money from another bank, but if you want to refund it later after year three, no problem, if you want to pay it down with cash, no problem, fully credit-approved, and this would be a revenue bond, like other revenue bonds we have, issued under your, uh, revenue bond legal documents, which we've had in place for a number of years, um, we would need as part of those documents to, uh, demonstrate to the bondholders, which at this point primarily is VRA, VRA today holds all of the existing revenue bonds, so we would need to put, as prescribed in the documents, an analysis together that demonstrates that we could issue this revenue bond, let's say with CNF Bank, and do it in a way that's compliant with your revenue bond covenants, um, we have no concerns about putting that projection together and, and working through that, but that is another step with a revenue bond that we have to do, it's called an additional bonds test, and we need to be able to demonstrate to them that when this new debt comes online, we expect to have revenues that are sufficient to pay that debt back within the confines of the covenants that you have in your revenue bonds. So, the comparison we've done on seven, looks at CNF Bank versus VRA, and the takeaway from this is we're going to suggest we eliminate VRA from the discussion for this project, because what you'll see, when you look at either the 15-year term, which is columns B and C, CNF versus VRA, or the 20-year term, CNF versus VRA, um, CNF is better, their rates today that are locked in are better than our estimates of where VRA is today, not to mention what VRA might do, what their rates might do between now and, and May 11th. Again, hindsight will be 2020, back on, you know, in May 12th, you might say, well, we really should have gone with VRA because rates went down, but what we know today is that the CNF rates are better than VRA, whether it's the 15-year or 20-year term, so for that reason, that bullet point in the upper right is, we would suggest that we move on from the VRA option for the revenue bond project, the utility project, again, not that you're going to move forward with the project, but if you do, and you want to do the revenue bond, we would recommend CNF, and then the question then would be, do you like the 15-year term or the 20-year term? The 20-year term has a lower payment, obviously, 556,000 versus 692,000 a year for the 15-year term, that's based on the full borrowing, if you were to decide to do half the borrowing, the numbers would be cut roughly in half, we believe that, and you, you, we'll talk a little more about this, the utility pro forma can, um, can absorb that debt service for that project, again, if it's something you want to pursue now versus, uh, where it's scheduled in the CIP in 2024. Any questions on that? Kind of set that to the side for a moment, unless you want to talk about the merits of the project, 15 versus 20 years, the appropriateness of the term for what it is that you'll be building?
I think we'll just move on, and then we'll, then come back to that, after we get, go over everything.
Okay, so that, that is, that is the utility project with the revenue bond, so then what we focused on is the lease financing, which again, we asked for three different dollar amounts for all of the u- the general fund project, and some are all of the utility project, the utility project could be financed with these other general fund projects, it does not have to be financed as a revenue bond, you have the ability to say, look, we don't want to mess with the revenue bond for the utility project, let's just lump it in with all of these other projects, so, the three bank proposals that we received, we're going to focus on Webster Bank, again, not necessarily a household name here, but we know them, we've worked with them, we've closed loans with them, they're, um, they're very active, and you can see regardless in the green highlight, regardless of the amount of money you might want to borrow, they've given the same interest rates, whether it's a 15-year at a 223, or a 20-year at a 265, clearly higher rates than what you got from CNF, right, they were 204 and 227, but good rates compared to the other two banks, and also good rates compared to where these other banks were on the utility, again, CNF gave a really attractive proposal, so, the lease financing, uh, would be higher rates than the revenue bond, but I think still very attractive rates, 223 for 15 years, 265 for 20. You go to page 10, a few other things related to VR, uh, to Webster, their rates are fixed, they're not going to change, uh, you, you would have the ability to prepay the loan in whole after 2029, so there will be a period of approximately seven years where this loan would not be able to be prepaid, that's not uncommon, not every bank does that, as we know, CNF gave us more flexibility, but it's about a seven-year no-prepay period, by comparison, if we went through VRA for these projects, they would have a 10-year no-prepay period, so it's, it's a little better than VRA, not quite as good as what you got from CNF, but still pretty reasonable, given where we are, they're pretty attractive rates, the likelihood of having a real opportunity to prepay that loan in the next seven years, I don't want to say it won't exist, but, um, it's, you know, we're, we're, we're expecting to be in generally a rising rate environment, so I think you can look at that seven-year no-prepayment and perhaps get comfortable with that pretty easily. They'll allow you to put the money, um, with them while you're being, while it's being spent, they'll allow you to put it with the state program called Virginia SNAP, so we've got lots of flexibility there, generally speaking, pretty low, um, low level of aggravation that you'll need to go through to get your money from them, I mean, you do have to requisition funds, but it's not an onerous process, um, they would like to know if we're going to move forward with them by the 25th of February, uh, just a verbal, um, and we would need to close by the end of March, again, if you want to do this with them, that timetable's very doable, um, there are, um, everybody that needs to approve the loan has in, in principle, but they've got to go through a formal credit pro- approach, uh, they don't expect any problems there, but it would take a couple of weeks, but again, I think it's, it's a minimal risk that anything would come up that we haven't already discussed, and then finally, um, using the historic high school site as collateral, no problem, we would need to do a title search on that to make sure it's clean property, so to speak, from a title perspective, and barring anything that's, comes back from that title search, there was, there would not be any expectation of needing a title policy or title insurance, so it's a title search that we would have to initiate, they're going to do a flood certification as the lender, and we would need to fill out an environmental questionnaire, so relatively straightforward in terms of what they would expect or need related to the collateral. All right, page 11, lot of numbers, but I think we can get here pretty, pretty straightforward, the left-hand side of the page is the 15-year payback, and what we're looking at here is Webster versus VRA, like we did on the prior page, trying to figure out if we're going to do this at all, do we go through a bank or VRA, so the left-hand side is 15-year, I might focus on the right-hand side, 20-year, I think there's a general thought process at, at the staff level, that if we're going to do this, we think 20 years might be more appropriate, so let's look at the right-hand side, columns H, I, and J are the Webster Bank numbers, and we've broken out for you the county projects versus the utility projects, so you can see the difference, and column J is the total, and you'll see, over the 20-year term, with Webster, if you were to fund everything with them, through a single financing as an EDA lease, you're paying back 32.1 million, okay, you see that at the very bottom of J. Compare that to VRA, where you push everything together, you borrow through them, at thir- the total payback is 31.7 million, 7, 8 million, so the, today, the VRA option is about $370,000 better, but again, those rates won't be locked in until May, and that little blue box that says plus 13 basis points, what that is, is how much could rates rise between now and May 11th until the VRA debt service matches Webster, and, and if VRA's rate today is, I'm going to round off, it's a 250, if it goes up to a 263, it's going to match Webster. Now, obviously, if it goes down, the, the, the advantage only gets better, right, it's already better by about 13 basis points, but if it goes up by more than 13 basis points, you would have been better off going to Webster, and so as we're sitting here looking at the current market, there's a lot of volatility, you've got some things going on, obviously, with the, the Fed and what they're trying to do to raise rates, to curb inflation, you've also got things going on internationally that kind of work at cross purposes, but what we have seen is volatility, up and down, and so, between now and May, I think it would be a very reasonable expectation that we could see rates go up by 13 basis points or more, that is not a major move in our market, I can't tell you it will happen, but as we're looking at this in the grand scheme of what could be 30-plus million dollars over 20 years, that gap could close pretty quickly between now and May with VRA, so, at the very bottom, bolt, it's, it's hard to see, but it's bolded, we have respectfully made the recommendation that if you're going to move forward with We have respectfully made the recommendation that if you're going to move forward with these projects, we are recommending that we would consider bank financing over V R A because I think it it limits your exposure to rate movement. And and again, you know, late May, we'll we'll know for sure what the absolute best path was. But given what we know today, that would be our recommendation. So if you accept all of that, what we're saying is if you're going to do any of these projects, we believe the bank financing approach is advantageous whether. Now, we have the final question, which is, do we do the utility with C N F and the other projects with Webster? Do we push them all together? What's the best approach? And that's what page twelve is is intended to show you. And again, I would say we would focus on the right hand side of the page, which is the twenty year options. So columns H I and J are if you do everything with Webster Bank with the rates that they have provided. You just saw these numbers, they're exactly what we saw on the prior page when we compared Webster to V R A. So H I and J is, let's do everything, do it all through one transaction, secured by the high school site, historic site, issued through the I D A, and we've got rates locked in. And the total payback over the life of the loan would be thirty two point one million. Alternatively, let's do, this is columns K, L and M, do the county projects with Webster, secured by the historic school, do a separate transaction, fund the utility project with C N F, take advantage of their rates. Yes, we've got two, two loans, two closings, we've accounted for that in our analysis. And the payback is slightly lower, it's thirty one point nine million, a savings of about two hundred thousand. That savings could be a little better because we have, we have accounted for cost of issuance. I think for the time being, we've gone a little bit on the high side. So my point in mentioning that is, I believe that when it all comes down to doing one loan or two loans, there's going to be a little bit of improvement on the numbers by virtue of reducing the cost of issuance assumption that we've made. And that's going to make the two deal approach, column M, look incrementally a little better. It's already about two hundred thousand dollars better. I think it'll look a little better when, if that's the approach we take and we really fine tune the cost of issuance. But the point being, even though it's two different loans, the numbers pencil out to where doing the two loans is technically better. Although I don't think doing it all as one loan with Webster is a bad idea. It's it's one transaction, we can break down the payments for your staff any way they want to see it. And, you know, you may determine that that's the path of least resistance. So let me, let me pause there, there may be some questions. And I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves because I know there's, there may be questions about just the merits of the projects themselves and even borrowing now versus later, so we stop there.
Thank you. Lot of information to take in there. Does anybody have any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockwood.
Well, I think that, you know, there's a lot of volatility, but I think everybody can acknowledge that inflation's not going away. We don't have any control over what international scenes are going to do. But there has been nothing but discussion about increasing interest rates multiple times in the upcoming year from the Fed. And I would say that's probably something we can anticipate. So to have interest rates in the twos in front of us is probably something we're not going to see for a while, if ever again. So I think that if if we are going to borrow, then we should be looking at, at now's the opportunity. And we should really seriously consider the opportunity to get that kind of rate.
On the utility project, we're going to take on the, on the proposal that has half the money, are we going to take that other half out of the utility?
Yeah, the modeling we've done is if we were to borrow half, yes, the balance of the money for the project could come out of utility reserves, or you could make a decision a couple of years down the road to to borrow again or something like that. So the modeling assumes it's half funded with debt and half funded with cash, but you aren't necessarily staking yourself out on that today if you only borrow for half the loan. But that's probably the thought process, and that's what we discussed at the staff level.
And on our, on our policies that we have with this bar, and is this going to put us out of?
No, I think all of this works within the policies. I think then, as we talked a little bit about that, right, we were in good shape on this.
Well, seeing that, they, they really gave us a, a great rate on our last bar and local bank, you know.
They did, and and I just might say, you know, it's not uncommon that, you know, there's a point at which any of these banks might say, look, we can't have, but so much exposure to any one lender, it it might be an internal policy, it might even be a bank regulatory issue. So I I wouldn't take the fact that they didn't bid on the lease as a concern about the counties wherewithal. I think it's probably an internal decision about the loans they already had because they really did were quite helpful in the fall.
Mr. Stairs.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the, and Mr. Lane, you're here. What is the projected date of the utility project?
The flood handling project.
Right.
We expect to start that construction in, or I'm sorry, middle of twenty twenty four.
Twenty twenty four.
So we're a couple of years out.
And my next question, if it's okay, Mr. Chad, what is the projected payoff date of the school, the high school?
We've got it's either twenty seven or twenty twenty eight.
Yeah, I think that's right. Fiscal year twenty eight.
Thank you.
So we would be borrowing the money two years before we use the money, is that what I'm hearing?
That that would be correct. Right now, for the flood handling project, the engineering is underway right now. But then you'll have to put it up to the.
And we did talk about that, and, you know, we're, we're talking about doing all of this on a tax exempt basis, which is what we would want to do. And I think there are some rules surrounding tax exempt borrowing and spending the money, but I think based on the current timeline, we're, we feel comfortable.
That money sent, sitting in reserve, is that earning anything?
Not a lot, but I guess between, I know monies that you all have, some of it sits with C N F, some of it sits maybe with one of the state programs.
Yeah, the rates are not very high right, right now, you might, you might expect, but but the treasurer has done an excellent job of locking into loan term rates. And some of them are over one percent, which is unheard of right, right now, but it doesn't count. But, but yeah, we're, we're, we're not going to turn up rate right now.
And and again, the way this could work, if you decide to move forward, particularly with the utility money, although the the general fund money might sit for a little bit too, as you get those projects teed up. But, you know, we would have those, the borrowing locked in, the money would be invested, albeit at a low rate. I guess if we have a general consensus that we think rates could be rising, there is some upside to that investment rate going higher. That's the kind of thing that that would move, certainly not sitting here saying that's a reason to do it all. But you have a borrowing rate locked and you have at least some potential expectation that the investment rate could go higher.
Would you, when you got ready to do that project, you couldn't pay half of it off, you'd have to wait seven years.
Well, three years with this C N F.
C N F, you could, you could do it, close and pay it off the next day, as long as you're not getting the money to pay them off from another bank. And then with, with, with Webster, it would be roughly at twenty twenty nine.
So that would be another reason to go with C N F on the bar and for the.
You certainly, yeah, I mean, you've got a better rate, you've got better flexibility on prepayment. It's a revenue pledge, you've done revenue pledges. So remember that that debt coverage ratio, we have to meet one point one five times in our utility debt. That's applicable as a revenue bond, it's not applicable if you did it as a lease. But it, it's, it's a fairly negligible difference. And the rate improvement from C N F, the prepayment language C N F, I think you could make a very good case. And that's what the bottom right of twelve says, is you even doing two loans, you're, you're, you are doing better by doing the utility loan with C N F, whether it's the whole amount or half the amount.
So in two years, we could see what, what that money's earning us, and we, we could decide to put half of it against the loan with no payment penalty. So I, my opinion, I think C N F would be the way, way to go on that.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't start the utility project earlier since we have the money sitting in a hole?
Engineering.
Well, okay, so, okay. So we're kind of locked in on that timeline.
But getting to construction, there's.
Doesn't sound like it.
We would end up paying, you know, that would cost us as well. I don't think it's the kind of thing we want to rush, make sure we get it done right. Hopefully, the supply chain issues will cool off in that time period. And that would bring our construction costs back into the normal range right here at this time. Those specialty type jobs right now are out there.
I think borrowing the full amount would be the way to go, just because, you know, we can pay it off anytime we like, pay it down anytime we like. And I just think that the interest rate is phenomenal and we're not going to see it again, so.
So let's, so you just need a G A N S or some, a motion?
Well, let me, um, let me just, I want to hit on one other slide for you, if I could, page thirteen.
Is that for both options?
This is just utility.
Yeah, so let's just stay, stay with that, and then we make a decision on that, and then move on to the other three projects.
Okay, so can I?
Yeah.
All right, so, so page thirteen, we just, this goes back to some of the utility modeling, and I just want to, I need to get my own bearings here, fifteen fifteen, okay. Column that says option three A, I'm on page thirteen, it's in the middle basically, option three A. That is the eight point eight million borrowed now with C N F over twenty years. So that's the two twenty seven rate. And eight point eight million, two twenty seven rate. What we've shown you at the very bottom is the, remember in our utility modeling, we have a baseline assumption about system growth of the utility of two percent. That's an assumption we've been using for a number of years. That's just natural connections and an increased flow, it's a baseline two percent growth rate. What the result of option three A is showing us is on top of that two percent growth in the system, borrowing the eight point eight million in F Y twenty two through C N F for a twenty year payback, to be able to continue to meet our covenants, we would need to see a, a, another two point three and another two point one percent growth in the system in fiscal years twenty four and twenty five, whether that's through flow or rates. So it's, it's, it's getting to, what I said earlier is the projections that we need to be able to provide to show that we can take this debt on, we are allowed in putting those projections together to assume growth in the system, that's a reasonable input in the model. On top of the two percent growth, though, we would need to see an additional four percent, four and a half percent over those two years. That is primarily driven, it's driven by two things. One, we're adding debt to the system, right? And two, the, in twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five, in our modeling is where we are expecting some drop off in connection fees and availability fees in different parts of the system, right? If you all remember that modeling, we have operating revenues from rates and charges, and then we have other non operating revenues. And for the last several years, we've been talking about there's a point at which some of these connection and availability fees are going to tail off. And so part of what is driving this need for the additional revenues in the system in twenty four and twenty five is not only the fact that we're adding debt, but also that there's, in the planning model, some expectation of some of those non operating revenues tailing off. So I think that's the other, just the other consideration in this. I know that you're early on in the F Y twenty three budget and and every year, rightfully so, there's discussion about utility rates and charges and other things. But what this assumes is that we, we do not change the rate in twenty three, we, on the, on the user rate. We do not change anything related to bottoms bridge. We do this borrowing and on top of the two percent growth that we have built into our model, there would, the, the model shows a need for another two percent per year plus to make the covenants work.
So you're saying there'll be no reduction in water rates?
If there were, these, these would be a little higher. The need for revenue would, would grow because we're taking revenue out of one area. We'd need to, the model would need to solve for, we need it somewhere else. So there may be, may be higher growth that is recognized to be able to offset a reduction in a rate. The, the, the revenue growth does not have to come from rates, it can come from new customers and flow. But if we, we have not assumed here that you change the rate in twenty three for either the users or the service district.
Just curious, the, the assumed two percent annual growth, did we exceed that in the last year?
By a pretty healthy clip.
So is that considered in this analysis?
We are starting our projections with the F Y twenty three. I guess at this point, it's a proposed budget or, yeah, so.
Okay, so it has been.
We've, we've captured, by doing so, we've captured the growth you saw in twenty one and twenty two and whatever growth is built into the preliminary twenty three budget.
Okay.
And there is some growth built in there. And then last thing, if you want to flip and see the results of what happens if you only borrowed for half the loan, page fourteen, column three B, it's just less stress on the system and there's basically no additional revenues needed on top of the two percent growth.
Which could also be considered kind of an equalization if we prepaid.
Correct, yeah, on the, on the first, on the first chart, yes, if there's, down the road, if you decide to prepay, if if cash reserves are getting to a place where you're comfortable doing that, then you could, you could close on page thirteen and end up on page fourteen, I think is what you're asking.
Yes.
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 But we've, we're pretty strong in the public utilities reserve, correct?
You are.
Yeah.
You are, no doubt. But you've got a pretty healthy C I P, but you are strong in terms of the level of reserves that you have, no, no question. So the direction would come, do we want to move forward with any of the four projects? If so, how much? And if so, bank versus V R A? And if it's bank, which bank? So is there waterfall? And before you do that, if if that is something you want to entertain, that direction would come today by, Dan could correct me, maybe a motion or Brendan, I don't know how you want to do it. But if that were to happen, we would come back on March fourteenth with the documents for one or two loans, whatever you decide. We would go to the E D A for the least part of the financing on March seventeenth. That would constitute the approvals and we would be in a position to close by the end of March if that's your desire.
All right, so let's tackle the C N F versus Webster. Good, Mr. Stairs.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, on, on some of these figures, of course, we have the historical school renovation at seven million dollars. And that, that appraisal was given to us when?
In twenty nineteen, the county contracted Hopkins and Associates to do some preliminary architectural work. That, that number came from that work, but we did add a little bit more to it for the rising cost of construction. And I'd also like to add that six point nine million dollars also includes the, the construction of a new school. The construction of a new school maintenance facility, which would be demolished at its current location.
And then if I may, also on the new animal shelter. Believe me, I love animals, but five million dollars.
You know, I, I, I questioned that cost, uh, but the, the sheriff, um, recently took us on a tour and. We had an opportunity to look at some other facilities, um, and that number really wasn't aligned with those facilities that, that were constructed. I will also add. Two years ago, the sheriff's office did some preliminary architectural work and, um, that number came in at around four million. I think just a little over four million, um, so we did ask for five just to include the rising cost of construction.
Alright, thank you.
I would imagine the discussion really needs to revolve around. Are we doing all three of these or?
That's what I thought we'd talk about the. The utilities project first, if, if that's the way I'm kind of hearing everybody's lean to kind of knocking that out the way. Then we'll decide if we need all three of those other projects. Cause we're gonna have to do the utility. Do we want to do it with Webster Bank and put it in?
I think if we do the, well, we are gonna end up doing, um, the utility project, I think. We should move forward with C N F Bank because it gives us a great deal of flexibility in. Prepayment and an excellent interest rate. And I think we should borrow the full amount because. The interest rate is so good, we do have the opportunity to pay it down or pay it off. If we decide to, and with all the other projects that we have up and coming, it would be wise for us to hang on to some cash. If we got it.
Alright, so is that a, we're gonna need a motion on that or consensus? So is everybody okay with them getting documents from C N F for the? Utility project? For the full amount?
Yeah, I should have noted, there, there would be a public hearing for the utility only, if it's a water and sewer revenue bond, which I believe we can do that on the fourteen.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that? Alright, we'll head that way, we'll see now. Now, I guess the next question is. Do we want to do any of these projects, all three of them? It's a lot of money.
I would say. I definitely believe that Station Four is a necessity at this point, not really an option. And we've already moved forward with purchasing the property. And, uh, if you've seen the condition of Station Four currently, I think it's in our best interest to move forward with that project.
Also just to add, just while you're thinking about this, the, the borrowing amounts, I, I believe that this, this can all be written in such a way. That if one project came in a little more expensive or a little less expensive, you have to.
Yes, of course.
Shift those dollars around to manage whatever mar- amount of borrowing we do, so. Uh, and I think, Dan, I mean, you may want to speak to that.
Yeah, that's right. I don't, I don't think any of the lenders care whether which is a dollar to go to what project as long as.
Senator Chair. Along the line of, um. Mr. Lockwood, absolutely, we've been talking about that station and talking about that station and the, um, condition of it. I did have the opportunity to look at it and, um, so I do believe that that's gonna be, um. That is gonna be a project that we're gonna need to do, um, when we talk about the historical school and, um. It is more than evident that we are running out of space, um, for documents and for bodies. Um, that is a building that we invested to put a roof on and so we have a, a building that could be utilized for the community. That sits empty and as long as it's empty, the building will deteriorate, so, um, I feel like if we want to. We own the, we own the property, we own the building, so to renovate the building is so that we can, um. Release some of the, uh, space management problems that we're having. Um, the animal shelter, um, I went on the, the. The, um, the tour, unfortunately, we couldn't get Mr., um, Mr. Steers' wife a puppy, but, um.
Not for lack of trying.
But, um, I. And, and I've, I've hassled with this idea of an animal shelter for a couple of years now, but, um. It's not gonna get any better. I am like Mr. Steers, I'm not sure that. That we need to spend five million dollars for an animal shelter, um. And that is the issue I have with that. And really with all of the pro- with all of the projects is the amount of money that. We are, um, we're requesting. And so my question becomes. If by some strange chance, we don't spend all the money. Can we utilize it on other capital projects that we have not mentioned today?
I, I think we can incorporate that into the approvals when they come and I don't think the bank would have a problem saying. These projects and other.
County cap- capital. That are on the C I P.
Okay, and so, and so my charge would be for, if this is approved, for each, um. Each department or for the county to absolutely be good stewards of these funds and, um. And, and do everything within our collective power to get what we need. And not to do our, uh, catalog wish book on them. That's all I have to say, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman. I, 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 I think everybody kind of chokes when they see that five million dollar number for the animal shelter and, and. I too was on that tour. One of the things I'd like us to do is see what kind of community support we can get financially. Because there were, was it Loudoun? Goochlin, Goochlin, that, uh, they raised a ton of money and included a lot of those wishlist things. Because they raised the money for them, so I'd like to see us, you know, maybe have some community involvement in that capacity that. You know, e- even if the project ends up costing the county five million dollars, if there's additional. Things that the community would like done above and beyond, I'd like to see some community involvement and fundraising. Similar to what they did in Goochlin because I thought it was a truly a nice facility, uh. And it was a lot to do with that, had to do with the, uh, community involvement and fundraising, so.
It doesn't hurt the Justin Verlander's parents live there either and I think they made a healthy contribution.
Yes, it does help.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tiller.
I agree, I think we do, Fire Station Four is definitely a necessity. Um, we've heard it for years. Pretty much since we started renting that little house for these people to be staying in. But I know, I think I did the math based on some of the numbers that Mr. Hathaway had given me. I think last week on the Rosie's money that's coming in, it's, it's dropped down to about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars per week. Is that correct, Mr. Hathaway? Hundred and seventy, well, it was up to a hundred and ninety maybe. Okay, well, a hundred and seventy thousand a week. I mean, really, as far as Station Four, we could take four weeks of revenue from Rosie's. And just about build that fire station and pay cash for it. And instead of financing the four million, pay cash for it and then use it. To go towards the animal shelter, instead of adding another four million dollars in debt for the fire station. And then do the same thing with Station Two.
Only issue I have, only issue I take with, only issue I have with that is that, um. We, um, we said we want to set aside that money for our bo- our broadband project. Um, and with everything that we're doing, we absolutely cannot let that project, um. Uh, escape us. Um, I think that that's a commitment that, um, that we made to our citizens. And it is a commitment that is very much needed. And I'm not saying the fire station isn't, but, um. I think that when we talked about the interest rates and borrowing money, that if we're gonna borrow, it would. It would be best for us to borrow the money from that now and continue to set aside funds through Colonial Downs. Um, for our broadband. Just my, my two cents. And, and just like I said, as far as, I, I mean, we built the fire station. At five for, well, so, anyway. Um, I just, and then, just like anything else, I just asked that we be, um, good stewards. And because we have four million dollars or five million dollars to build something, to be good stewards and be mindful that it is indeed our taxpayers' money. And, um, and shop accordingly. That's just what I think.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, we, we have stated for quite a while now that the, the money from Rosie's coming in. Would, you know, pretty much be dedicated to broadband. And, um, I think we need to keep it in that pot just because of. It, it also, by us funding it, gives us a lot of flexibility in how we move forward with broadband. As opposed to, uh, the limitations that some of the grants that we haven't received, uh, the restrictions that they would have imposed on us, so.
I would tend to agree with you. That is very frustrating though that we've not received any grant funding from all the money that's out there in New Kent. It's looked over time and time again, so that's very frustrating that we. We should get some, some grant money, I mean, I feel like, and then we probably could take some cash like you're talking about, Mr. Tiller, but, uh.
Well, that's the beauty of where we are. I mean, we do have the funds to move forward with broadband, but that doesn't mean that we don't. Continue to pursue those grant opportunities that would replenish that cash we, we put out, so. I think that, you know, we keep the Rosie's money in the broadband pot until we realize that we don't need it for that specific use.
And, and I'd also like to add, we are in a, a, a really good position too because if we keep current trends with Rosie's revenue. By the end of next fiscal year, we should have all we need for broadband. So therefore, F Y twenty four, we can look at. Utilizing that Rosie's money to other capital projects such as fire stations and other capital improvements.
Anybody else? We do know that space is an issue. That's for sure. Could we build a new building for seven million dollars? This more, uh.
Depending on what type of building, if we're looking at a new administration building, from what I've seen out there. We're probably in the thirty million dollar range, um, for the size building that, that, that we, we would need. Um, and I wouldn't recommend building to what we exactly need today, but building a building. That would suit us towards the future as, as well, so.
Well, when we got our retreat, I mean, pretty much every director says. Uh, space is an issue, so we, we obviously know that.
And are we gonna really get, gain that much space, office type space with this renovation? I mean, it, it doesn't seem like there's a whole lot of office space being.
Well, with, with the historic school plan, um, our extension office and our Parks and Recreation offices. Would move to the renovated historic school, which would free that current, free up that current building that they're in. And we're talking now about uses for their, their current space. One big need for the county right now is storage. Um, that's one of the things we're, we're looking at utilizing that space for, um, but no decisions.
So the office space that we free up would be in turn used for storage or we would be moving offices out of the current admin building? Into that Parks and Rec?
Right now, um, well, we're, we're considering a lot of options, uh, definitely storage is. You know, we just did a space survey amongst all of our, our county offices. Storage was the number one issue and, and we are definitely looking for solutions to gain additional storage.
And, and the other thing, um, um, Ms. Mr. Lockwood, is that. That, um, building has a basement on both sides. And so when we talk about storage, that's another opportunity either for storage. Or for, um, offices down there. Um, it has two separate hallways, um. There used to be classrooms down there for, um, potential space. Um, if we do go with storage there, then we have the building at. Um, Parks and Rec is currently housed in. I think Mrs. Stock has done a, a, a great job of, um. Space planning and sending out surveys so far. And, um, and eve- and just as importantly. Is that we don't have a space for our community. Um, so the old auditorium, we have opportunities for. We have a stage there, so we have an opportunity for reunions and banquets and plays that they don't have to, um. That we can bring right here. Uh, we have an opportunity for the library to be a conference room, I E. Uh, we have a lot of regional meetings and they always say, can we come to New Kent? Well, we don't have anywhere big enough to host them, you know. So that's a place that we can use. We have, um, classrooms that can be used, uh, as a permanent home for our seniors. That, um, Senior Connection and Senior Cafes don't have a place and so they don't really have a space, so. It's opportunity to over there with those classrooms, some of them as big as they are, probably to make them into two rooms out of a classroom. But, um, so, I don't, I don't know, with the cost of these buildings, I know we can't build a building like that for seven million dollars. And hopefully, it's, it's, and the seven million is not just the school, it's the school and another facility, if I'm not mistaken.
It is, it, it's to relocate the metal building that fronts New Kent Highway where school maintenance is located. One of the primary reasons we're looking at relocating that building is if we make the historic school a community facility, we already have po- parking issues. There now with all the youth sports that take place, um, it would allow us to expand the parking in that area. To accommodate the uses in that building.
Mr. Steers?
Uh, and since we're talking about maybe having more storage, um, and when we went on the trip to go visit the little animals. Uh, I had mentioned that, um, you know, we have the Providence Forge Rescue Squad building that's being used for nothing but storage right now. And if we moved everything out of there, that would make a great location for an animal shelter, that building. And it's pretty much gutted out as it is. You could go in and put a couple offices and then your cages. Enclose all four or five of the bays where the ambulances park and, and close that. You've got plenty of space for more animals. And it's a more central location than where the sheriffs wanted to build it. Over in the Bearmanville area. And I think if, and, and I, I, I know it's not on, uh, water and sewer like Goochlin and, uh, Prince George, but. You know, you, you can build larger drain fields, um, and, and they said that you have to have a grinder. Yeah, no matter what, you have to have a grinder, so, uh, but I think that's something that we could look at. If we could go in there and retrofit that building and make, it would make a nice animal shelter.
My, my question about that, Mr. Steers, is, um, do you think the neighborhood is too close?
It, all the dogs and animals will be indoors.
Well, you know, in the back, we saw the pens where they.
Yeah, like usually they take them out, put them in the pens when they're cleaning their cages, but then they bring them right back in. There probably one family upset, but. You know, but he's already upset.
Is that a, is that deed, what is that deed state? Does it have to be used for? Anything in the community? Cause, uh, it, it doesn't have to be like a fire station or something.
No, it doesn't, it had, as long as it had to come back to the county, period.
Yeah, we, we've taken care of that deed. There was, the original deed had it reverting back to the Howard family, but I think that that's been addressed now. So it's ours to use as, as we lose. but I think that that's been addressed now, so it's ours to use as, as we lose.
I guess, that's, that's definitely worth looking at.
So, Mr. Chairman, so that, with that being said, with Mr. Steers just talked about renovating or retrofitting that old building, do we want to leave that five million out of what we borrow? Or do we want to borrow part of it so we could use it for retrofitting if that became an option? And again, going through C N F Bank, if we borrowed the whole five million, we'd end up paying it back without a penalty.
The C N F's just the utilities.
Forget all that then.
But it is, it is certainly an option with Webster that you borrow a portion of what those project costs are. That's what you decide. It's not all or nothing. They're happy to.
Break it down.
Do a smaller.
Yeah, but they wanted to, they wanted the commitment date within, by the twenty-fifth of this month, correct?
Is that a commitment date on the? Is that a commitment date on the amount as well or up to or?
We can manage the amount with them. It's just, are we the recommended approval loan lender? And they know that it's subject to all the other actions. But it, so no, if you, if you want to move forward and you, you're not completely set on which project or how much, I think we can manage that for now.
As long as we, they know we're gonna do something.
And we would need to decide the amount prior to closing.
Yeah, I mean, our next action would be on March fourteenth for this lease financing with Webster and there would be resolution and documents. So I guess, I don't know whether on the fourteenth it could be finalized or we need to go ahead and. I think we could set, we could set it up so that it's up to a certain amount. If you brought it down, you could do it at that meeting.
Okay. Cause obviously, you know, there'd be a lot. It's, it's not a matter of just, you know, spending the weekend at the fire station, putting up a few walls. I mean, we're talking, you know, significant improvements that would need to occur there. Uh, and, and what kind of cost that would entail. So I think we'd need to make a decision based on a little more information than what we have right now as to how much an animal shelter located at that former station would cost.
So you just need a commitment that we could borrow up to probably sixteen million dollars, sixteen whatever?
That's right. I think that's, since we've, we've addressed the utility elsewhere, I think that would be sort of.
Sixteen one hundred fifty thousand?
Moving forward with, with presumably Webster Bank in an amount up to sixteen.
Million one hundred fifty thousand?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
And that would give us the flexibility to, to change that by the fourteenth?
And I'd just like to add too, with the twenty-year option to pay back, I believe is one million twenty-five thousand. You currently have set aside five hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars to cover that debt service and that comes from the additional two percent on the Mills tax. So you'll roughly need another four hundred thousand, which we're trying to absorb within our budget for new growth. But, uh, we're still pretty early in, in the budget process.
Is that two percent? I mean, that, is that a conservative number there?
Uh, the, the two percent is already set.
Yeah, I know it's there, but is that number, that estimate?
Oh, that, that amount, the five ninety-one? Yeah, and, and that number is gonna grow as we take on more food facilities, venues in the county. That, that number's gonna grow.
I thought that two percent was, uh, to be in a set aside account for the new school.
No, it was for capital projects. We, we already have all we need for the new elementary s- school that's being constructed now.
I meant the new middle school that's gonna need, we're gonna need in about six or seven years.
Uh, I, I don't believe, the board just said capital projects, um.
All right, anything else? So I think we have a consensus from the board that we would borrow up to sixteen million, one hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Webster.
With Webster.
Twenty-year.
Twenty-year option.
And then, March fourteenth, approval, finalize the amount on both loans and a public hearing for the water sewer revenue. No public hearing is needed for the lease financing. We'll let the E D A know that if that all takes place, we'll be coming to them on the seven, seventeenth.
Okay. All right, anybody else have anything for? Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Five, yeah, I'm gonna take a five-minute break.
Hey. Mm-hmm. Was he talking about the old fire station that we just moved out of? No, he's talking about. Yeah, that's what he's talking about. Yeah. I don't know. I mean, I should kind of just threw that out there. I've, I gotta give that some thought. Is that the first time you've heard that from him? Yeah, um. Have y'all seen that building lately? Back to the ground. Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, that, that creates another issue as storage and I just understand storage is a big issue with us. And you.
Call order back, call the meeting back to order. Item four. Request for appropriation for C Z, C C TV security cameras.
Hi, good morning. Appreciate your, uh, consideration this morning. Um, we were made aware of a grant opportunity through Department of Emver- Emergency Management, um, for security upgrades on soft targets and that sort of thing. Um, so we went ahead and put in an application and we were offered forty thousand dollars, uh, for some security cameras for our D P U operations center, the wastewater plant, and the four water storage tanks. The specifics of the grant require that you do not have money appropriated. Uh, that would be a disqualifier. So that's why you did not see this project in our capital improvement, uh, proposal for this year. So we're requesting, um. a motion to appropriate the funds for the cameras and installation as well as Mr. Hathaway's approval or signature on the agreement with Viden.
All right, any questions for Mr. Lang? I don't think so.
I have one. I don't have a problem with it, but I was just, do we have internet at all those well locations that would?
Wonderful question. We do not. The data would be stored onsite and retrieved as needed. We do have internet at our office and we're working on that upgrade at wastewater plant, so we would have real-time video at those two locations, the staff locations, which to me are the priority here.
Anything else? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move to appropriate one hundred and ten thousand dollars from the Public Utilities Fund balance to the Public Utilities Capital Improvement Plan for installation of CCTV cameras at the specific locations and to authorize the county administrator to sign the Viden funding agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Tiller. Any discussion? Ms. Watkins, Rep. Members.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it?
Mm-hmm. Item five, New Kent Social Services Lobby Remodel Construction Agreement. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This morning, I am asking for authorization to execute an agreement to remodel the lobby in the New Kent Human Services Building. This remodeling project will enclose, will enclose an office that would become part of the social services suite, which would give them additional needed office space, as well as allow social services to install two work stations, stations for clients to fill out applications for services and add additional privacy for social staff to work with clients in need for various applications. This project is in your current capital improvement plan budget. The majority of the funding will come from the state. Currently, forty thousand dollars is allocated. Thirty-three thousand eight hundred dollars of that would come from state funding. Six thousand two hundred would come from county funding. We received seven bids for the invitation for bids, which was a great response. All of the prices were close, which is an indication that we did a good job with our architectural work in putting the quote together, putting the request together. The lowest bid was forty-five thousand nine hundred dollars from Woodland Constructions. Again, the additional amount of five thousand nine hundred dollars, the majority of that would come from state funds as well. It's anticipated that the additional funds from the county that will be needed is just under a thousand dollars.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Hathaway?
I'm excited to make a motion.
Ms. Page?
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the county administrator to execute the proposed agreement in a form approved by the county attorney for construction services to remodel the social services lobby area in the New Kent Health and Human Services Building.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Watkins, Rep. Members.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Item six. Agreement for Comprehensive Plan Review and an Update on Consulting Services. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Along with procurement, we've also have advertised a request for proposals for consulting services to lead in our comprehensive plan process. The county received, in February, earlier, a couple of weeks ago, the county received two proposals for consulting services for the update and review of our comprehensive plan. On February eleventh, representatives from the Planning Commission and staff reviewed two firms that submitted proposals. And the interview panel unanimously selected a group by the name of EPRPC. I believe they're based in Charlottesville. Their price, their proposed proposal cost is one hundred and ninety-five thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. I am requesting authorization to sign an agreement not to exceed that amount. I'm currently working with this group to see if we can reduce that. I don't anticipate us reducing that by much, but I do think the final agreement price will be a little cheaper. We've identified areas where we can save some costs thus far. This is roughly a two-year project. This price is a little more than what I had anticipated, but we are getting one of the top firms across the state that does comprehensive plans. They have an array of experience, and really what set them apart from the other group that we interviewed was their experience in rural communities and their experience in the Richmond region, and this region in general, the peninsula as well. They came very highly recommended. We've reached out to their references, the other communities that have worked with them, highly recommended them, and they've worked all around us. James City, they're currently doing the comprehensive plan for Hanover County. They've done Chesterfields. They've Henrico as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Any comments? Something we gotta do.
Mr. Chairman, I think that we started a strategic plan and completed it. We, we had a map of how we were going to do this, and so I think this is something that we have to do. And so if there's no discussion, I have a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
I move to authorize the county administrator to execute an agreement for the amount not to exceed one hundred and ninety-five thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars with EPRPC in a form approved by the county attorney for comprehensive plan review and update consulting services.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Watkins, Rep. Members?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Thank you. Last item, discussion with planning and zoning staff. Ms. LaDuke and Mr. Vaughn?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Things that we know we need to do, and that's partly because we're kind of short on staffing, so I kind of wanted to talk a little bit about that. The history of the planning staff, when I started here sixteen years ago, we had eight people doing planning and zoning. Now we have four. So in the past, when we had more staff, the main responsibility of the planning directors was to basically attend meetings and keep up with ordinance updates. So that's been kind of a struggle for us. We also had a zoning inspector, whose primary responsibility was to inspect and process violations. So now those duties have been taken on by the staff that we have now. So the county population's almost doubled in that amount of time. The workload's basically tripled while the staff's been cut in half. Couple of things that helps to keep our morale up. We continue to receive positive feedback from both the public and the citizens that we assist, as well as the development community. Among the kind of things that we've been hearing, especially lately, is that we're so much easier to work with in other localities, all of whom have much larger staffs. We haven't really missed a beat since we've been short-staffed when it comes to getting our plan reviews out and our comments out on time, so we appreciate that. It's appreciated how quickly we can turn around violations, phone calls, emails, things like that. And it's pretty rare how we, as a staff, are willing to go out onsite and meet with developers and people, which is kind of rare. So those are things that kind of keep us going, so we appreciate that. Little bit about typical day down in our office. Obviously, our first priority is to answer and respond to emails, phone calls, walk-ins. We get a lot of people coming in with certificates of zoning, and it's a goal of ours to process those immediately because that means someone can get their business license, so that does take up some time. Another thing we try to do right away is process new plan reviews that come in because when those come in, the legal deadlines start. So we have to get those out and disseminate it to everybody who needs to review them. Along with those, we input all of that into our tracking software, our intergov software, as well as, we legally are required to put together paper files on each of these in accordance with FOIA, so that's, hence the storage issue. Our file room is jam-packed full of paper files, but we have to keep those. So there's nothing we can really do about that. Another couple of things we do on typical days, meet with the public, developers regarding varieties of questions and land use issues that come up. And we also organize and conduct a lot of pre-application meetings, DRC meetings. So on days where it's quote-unquote "less busy," that's when we review our plans. So we've got different varieties of plans, different varieties of subdivision plaits, development and construction plans, site plans, all our public hearing applications for rezonings and CUPs, because we have to meet our legal deadlines for all of those. So over the last year or so, we've processed and reviewed over two hundred certificates of zoning, forty-eight subdivision plaits, and those include parent tract subdivisions, family subdivisions, minor subdivisions, the cluster subdivisions, large lot subdivisions, preliminary and final subdivisions. Six large development and construction plans. These are basically the detailed infrastructure and road plans, and the majority of the ones we've been seeing lately are in the farms in New Kent. So we've got those, and we've got also dispatch station. Those ones are pretty large plans. Twenty-five boundary line adjustments or extinguishments, fifteen site plans, which are projects of all sizes. The cultural event permits kind of slowed down with COVID, but we did have about six of those last year, and I can anticipate that we're going to have a lot more as things get back to normal. We had fifteen applications for rezoning, CUPs, PUD amendments, ordinance amendments. These are the ones that come before you guys for public hearings. So they all require pre-application meetings, public hearings, writing staff reports, preparing legal documents. Sherry in our office has researched, processed, reviewed, written staff reports, and presented fifteen AFD applications, keeping in mind each of these require public hearings before three boards. Mr. Vaughn has processed thirty-five zoning violations, fifteen zoning opinions, and removed countless signs from the VIDAR right-of-way. He's also reviewed and processed hundreds of zoning permits. I don't know if you guys are familiar with this process, but every building permit that comes in to Brian's office requires a zoning permit, so we have to review those as well for zoning compliance. So Kenny has to process those as well. And then keeping in mind, when expedited or economic development projects come in, everything else gets pushed to the back of the line. So Matt just informed us that the AutoZone plans are probably coming in next week, so that's going to be a main priority that gets shifted for us. Switching gears a little bit to talk about some things to note for the future, and I'm going to name-drop Mike, but Mike Lang's been really great about keeping me informed in inquiries that they're getting in Public Utilities about expanding water and sewer service. So if that happens, that's going to create a lot more growth pressure for us and a lot of more requests from developers, especially looking for residential rezonings. We are getting inundated with calls about where's the best place to come in and try to get more housing approved. So that's something that we are struggling with a little bit because there's, you know, really no R1 zone property right now. So that's, that's something to be aware of. With the comp plan review, an important thing I wanted to point out, the future land use map and the utility service area maps are going to be critical to pay special attention to because those are really what we look at when people come to us looking for new land to develop. The, obviously, the solar stuff. We had a Marathon Planning Commission work session last night to talk about renewable energy and solar sources, so they, yeah, they may have gone a little overboard, but there's some people on the Planning Commission that just have a wealth of knowledge on this stuff, and, I mean, it was really kind of cool to see how much they were really putting into it, so kudos to them. Not quite sure exactly where we got as far as the performance standards, but we are working on them. Yes. Trying to rein them in a little bit. The cluster subdivision inquiries, I know this is a hot topic right now. We have gotten calls about the, I'm just going to, kind of list of these in here, but ones that we have heard about so far. The Goodness State, the property that's for sale off Topeka Road, it's about two hundred and fifty acres. We're getting inquiries about a cluster subdivision possibly going in up there. Property off Airport Road, it's about a hundred and seventy-two acres. We're getting inquiries about that one. The Whitehall Property off Old Roxbury Road, it's about three hundred acres. And the McKenzie Farm Property off One Fifty-Five, it's about a hundred and seventy-seven acres. So those are coming down the pipe, and none of which would require a rezoning. So we are looking at what we can do about the cluster subdivision ordinance. And then for, yeah. If you combine them all. They are, but if they came in and did a lot extinguishment, a lot line extinguishment, and put them all together, that would make them eligible. Yeah, the family subdivision provision's the only one with the holding period. Yeah, and then a couple of other things that we've been meeting folks on with the PUD, proposed PUDs. Liberty Landing, they're back. They're in the process of scheduling, and they're going to have some community meetings down in District Two, and then they would like to come to the Planning Commission in March to present, so I can anticipate their official application coming in shortly after that. We've gotten inquiries and met with Lloyd Poe, who owns the property next door here between the county complex and Shoot 'Em Run. He's expressed some interest in doing a PUD, commercial and residential. And then we've also been getting calls from the folks representing the Riley Low tracks at the Exit Two Fourteen interchange north of sixty-four. Mr. Brooks has been inquiring about. Mr. Brooks has been inquiring about PUD development there. And this is not all-inclusive, but these are just a couple of the big things that are coming. So I hope that helps to answer questions about where we are and what we've been doing. And I'll be happy to come back again if there's things that I didn't address or if you have questions now for us. And I don't know if you want to add anything?
We're very busy.
Well, I have something to say, you're not in business, you're going to be.
And I'll, Mr. Vaughn, I'll call you on my way home and let you know where the signs that I saw this morning, but I went by, I came a different way, so I was a little out of my element when I got here this morning, so, but I'll call you back.
I thought Mr. Steers was going to be the one picking up the signs.
Well, anybody have anything? We all going to be looking at the cluster subdivision ordinance.
Only thing I, I have to say is it becomes a little bit frustrating. When we, when, as a board, when we, we come up with like subdivisions, and we talk about cluster subdivisions, and we talk about subdivision sizes, it would absolutely help me, I don't know, but the other board members, if all of these other ordinances, that if we could look at them at the same time, because it's like we're doing part of an ordinance, but then it's like, oh, well, if they do this, then we could do this. And so for me, I don't have the whole picture, and, and I need the whole story. And so, you know, while we are passing different segments, i.e. increased property or things like that, then you have, who knew that, then you could re-realize and re-relot or whatever, and then go that route. I mean, it's like we don't have the whole story. And, and so that would be so helpful, you know? I mean, it's, it's on our agenda, so if we're going to talk about it, then I think that we should have all the information about the different ones that it would affect that would absolutely help our intent. It would help our intent. Thank you for picking up signs. I have about twenty-four in the back of my pickup. I picked up this weekend, so you're welcome for the help, Mr. Vaughn. And.
Thank you.
And it's appreciated for, for the job that you all do. I understand staff cuts and, you know, the lack of people. However, it was a time when this county was not growing as fast as it's growing now. And so for what you do now, it's appreciated. However, we have some things coming up that is absolutely going to make it more challenging, so I might as well tell you, get ready, to get ready, and to get ready to open up for visionary projects, projects that we absolutely depend on you guys. You are our experts. We depend on you for vision. We depend on you for, everything doesn't have to be a yes, and we're okay with a no. You know, we're, we're okay with a no. But it's, it's just how do we want where we live to look? That is my biggest thing. How do we, you know, we don't want to look like we just pick and chose something because here they come. So how do we want it to look? Some things, I know they have like buy rights and all of that, but still, with all the time you spend with, with developers and a conversation of how we want it to look, you know? And so that's, that's my, my two cents. And absolutely, auto zone is a priority, so I'm told, so thank you.
Mr. Vaughn, were you ever able to get in touch with the LV, was it LBJ, power washes?
Yes, I tr- I tracked them down.
You did?
Yeah, I did, I did track them down, and they're going to owe us twenty-one hundred dollars in fines.
So did you want the ones I got too, to add to that, or you already sent it?
No, if, if you want to give them to me, that's fine.
Okay.
Or just let me know how many, how many did you pick up?
Okay, I'll separate them later.
All right, thank you. Mr. Steers?
Yes, Mr. Vaughn knows that when I go back there, I will not take no, so he knows that. But anyway, my, my question is, have you guys, is it in proposed in next year's budget for additional staff? I mean, if you're understaffed half of what you need, are we addressing that, or are we just going to cope with it?
I think we do, sorry, I think we do need to cope with it because I've been here twenty-two years. I've been here when it was like a cowboy place, it was the Wild West, and all we used to do is train planners, they would go somewhere else. I had decided to stay. I've, I've moved here, I love this place, but right now, like I said, everybody's excited about the building permits. You know, every building permit I see, it touches my hand. I, I just don't look at it, I have to see, can they do it? Are they following the ordinance and, and those things like that? Mrs. Steers, I'll be honest with you, some days, I'm going crazy. I go home, I want to talk to my wife and my kids.
So is that why you don't call me back?
That's a big mistake.
But I, but I'm, but that's what I'm saying, it's just, it's, it's so much, this county is growing so much, and we definitely need help, we can't.
So you do need additional staff?
Yes, sir.
Is it proposed?
Our budget team is meeting actually this Friday to go through personnel requests. I believe planning did submit for an additional staff person.
We did, we did in last year's budget. This year, our challenge was that Cody left, so we filled his position, and now we're going to fill Sherry's position and kind of recalibrate and see where we're at as far as, you know, workload. But we're also interviewing for a transportation person, which is why we did not ask for an additional person this year. I have the previous four or five years asked for another planner. But yeah, if we get the transportation person, that will take a lot of work off of my shoulders, so that would, you know, free me up to do a little bit more of the ordinance updates and things that I should be doing. So we're going to kind of recalibrate once we get the vacancies that we have open right now filled, and I'll have a better idea next year if we do need another person. But, I mean, having a zoning inspector would be invaluable. So that's something that's on the horizon for next budget.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Thank you, yes, I, I do. First of all, thank you to both of you. I know you guys are carrying a heavy burden. I, I really appreciate this, and, and I, I don't want to add more things to your docket, but I would love for us to get regular updated information like this of things that, you know, even if it's not applied for, but you see it on the horizon, people are inquiring. I'd like for us to get a very regular update on those things that you see coming down the pike almost as soon as you see them, because it's, it's amazing how fast in this world today the social media clings to information. And I don't, I don't, right or wrong, and, and I don't like it coming to us through that venue before it gets to us, you know? And I'd like for us to be getting regular information when you see something coming up, and it, it probably is something that, working with Public Utilities, when, when you start getting inquiries, that we see possible projects coming that you let us know. And, and if you could do that on a regular basis, or, and, and update the ones that you've already provided just so that we see things maybe before they get here, and we can at least be informed and maybe prepared for them. They're not all negative things, don't get me wrong, but it, it is kind of surprising sometimes when something you guys knew about and we didn't. So if we could get that regular information, it'd be great.
Mr. Chairman? I know, I think Mr. Moyer had kind of asked last month at the Planning Commission meetings similar information, and I agree with Mr. Moyer and Mr. Lockwood. It's nothing like getting blindsided when somebody says, what do you know about, or what have you heard about such and such, and we go, we haven't heard anything about it. What do you mean you didn't know about that? It is, but yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Lockwood. Something happens, and I know John was really concerned about that because that was kind of what he said was from people approaching him. So that would be, it's a good idea, John.
Just to address that a little bit, the majority of plans that we review don't ever come before you guys. So, yeah, I mean, we've gotten hundreds of lots created over the past couple of years just with these buy rights subdivisions, and they all add up. But yeah, we can certainly put together, and some site plan stuff too. You don't really see it till they break ground when we have the plans because they don't have to come for public hearings, so, yeah, like monthly, bi-monthly. Okay.
Yeah, I'll think.
And if you see something that maybe kind of gets your attention, it should probably get ours without waiting for it to hit the monthly list.
And everything we keep proprietary too. I know some of the stuff comes, we have to be careful, let's, just like this auto zone project, you know? Stuff is quiet, we need to make sure, it's not supposed to get out there. We need to make sure our staff and planning do not let it get out if they do find out too, just, just.
But don't we have, don't we have a system that, or do we have a system that we, that we input this information so we can just generate a report from that system? Do we have anything like that?
Yeah.
So that's an easy fix.
Yeah.
I would think.
Those are for applications that we get, that we get in-house though. For things that we get phone calls and inquiries about, we don't put those into the intergov tracking system. Okay.
All right, thank you all for the update.
Thanks, guys.
We have a closed session.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to go into closed session pursuant to two, two-point-five dash, two-point-two dash thirty-seven eleven eight dash one of the Code of Virginia for discussion of assignment, appointment, and promotion involving Public Utilities Director position.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Watkins, Rep. Members?
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.